We're done on the first agenda item. City Code, Chapter 2 Review. Yeah, Chapter 2 we'd like to hold over. We've got, you know, a few things that we need to look at. There are several items that we need a little bit more tweaking on, some language things. We want to take a look at statutes as well as, I think, the council pay was wrong there as well, so we want to make sure that we get that in the format that we needed. Hopefully, if I can perhaps in the first meeting of July. There's nothing critical that we've got to get done on that one, but we just want to make sure it's right and consistent. Okay, so Chapter 3 then? Chapter 3, Tony and I and Wendy have looked at that. That one is pretty much chapter and verse from the League of Minnesota Cities as far as the liquor code, model liquor code that they recommend. American Legal, you might recall, there's a lot of new council members on. We had a study done by American Legal Publishing and they looked at our city code and what they do is they compare it to what they would recommend for a city code. And there's a few things that they suggested that we take a look at changing. You know, Chapter 2, Chapter 3, which is the liquor code, you know, those are the areas that we're looking at now. So that's what is prompting some of this. We also note in Chapter 3, there was a discussion on the social host ordinance that was presented to us a number of months ago. And it is included in Chapter 3 as a proposal. So in both Chapter 2 and Chapter 3, if you have any questions or comments or anything, be sure to let us know what those are so we can take those into consideration and bring back to you the ordinances that, you know, at least that you'll introduce and perhaps approve. Oh, I don't know, Tony, do you have any more to add?
I don't really, that's about it. We followed pretty much the leads, recommended code on this. This also has the result, and as you know, we now will be open on the days where the holidays are relatively close. So we kind of took out all the holiday issues, the Sunday time change a little bit, but other than that, it's pretty much straight out of the code. And the social host ordinance is really the thing that we tacked on to the background. So it's all there.
If we, and I understand we're not doing the first one, but if we do this second one, if we introduce that tonight, what about, you know, the title and things like that, which I know title isn't available. But if there's, if we introduce things tonight, then if anybody has an idea for a change or a discussion, can we still do that at the next meeting before we hold on it? Or is it introduced and such, and we either take it as such or go to one down and bring up a new one? Because we're going to have a discussion and the introduction is going to hold it to that. I think we need to know that because that is, so people don't think after you introduce something in tonight's meeting, that, okay, that's it, and we're going to hold on to it next night.
Yeah, we've had, you know, a number of ordinances, I know, in the time I've been here that we've looked at things and we've changed them and decided to pull them back, bring back another ordinance, so then figure out something. My experience has been is that if it's non-substantive, titles and things like that, you can take care of that one, I'll re-educate it seems to me. But if you're changing the substance of the ordinance, pulling out a whole section and adding in something different in that section, you know, then it would seem to me you pull the ordinance, I'll re-educate it in a new ordinance. I think as Tony said, I mean, if there's some changes that you're not comfortable with, you can sell, the state statute says you can sell alcohol on certain holidays. We didn't allow that in some situations, the new ordinance won't allow that. I think that was the city's Sunday, was it 12 noon?
Yeah.
This one, I think, talks about 10 o'clock in legislature. I was actually talking about 8 o'clock and somewhere for some reason, the other one that passed. But, I mean, those are the kind of tweaks that we made that we want you to make, be sure you're aware of, and if you're comfortable with those changes. And then certainly that, you know, the section on the social host that was talked about a while back. But if it's non-substantive, I mean, people will introduce. If there's some sections that you're not sure about and you want to have some more to date about, I don't know, we're going to introduce it. Just yet, let's have some more talk about it in the work section, get it to where, in the format that you're comfortable with, and then we'll introduce that one later.
Did anybody go for a read on it there?
Yeah.
I got a couple of questions, one being, and I think there was debate years ago about 1 o'clock versus 2 o'clock closing time. So I'm not saying it should be 2, but if we're paying back in state law, maybe we should consider it. At least if we wasn't here to opine on what would happen between 1 and 2, I mean, I wouldn't think there's a whole lot of difference.
I did talk with the chief about that, and we did have it at 2 o'clock for a period of time. And in my conversations with him, the police department prefers 1 o'clock, and I don't know if Lori had mentioned that as well or maybe not, but I'm pretty sure the chief prefers 1 o'clock. I don't know if there were some problems going to 2 o'clock or what the issue was, but he was pretty, pretty firm last time I talked with him on the, preferred the 1 o'clock. I don't know if the council wanted 2 o'clock, if he has any feeling that the council wanted it, but that was something that he dealt with. And I don't know the exact reasons for the 1 o'clock, but I think that's the way he wants it. The 2 o'clock is optional, so it's.
Was it there only like one bar or something that was interested?
I was going to say, we did, there was an additional fee to be open until 2 o'clock. We only had one establishment that opted to go with the 2 o'clock closing. And then at some point in time, they even wanted to give it up because it just got, people were just hanging around the bar too long, it was getting too late, you know. So they even opted, the establishment that had it opted out with the 2 o'clock license as well. So, and I know the police chief had several times indicated they prefer that 1 o'clock closing.
You know, the 2 o'clock has been out there for quite a while. We had, when I worked up in Brainerd and as well, the current establishments as well, and the bar owners did not want it to go to 2 o'clock. They just, I mean, it's an extra hour, there just isn't enough, like, demand for it. You're just keeping the lights on and the people there are, you know, your employees are an extra hour, and there just wasn't enough light. It is an option, though, if you can take a moment, find one, that'll have a strong opinion.
Right.
And call last time it was the ones that make it, so I don't want to do my own movie there.
Well, I read through it, and I just had a, just a couple of misspelling and one thing where it said on the first violation in a three-year period, well, the first violation is in, I'm not necessarily in a three-year period, so it's just verbiage that I thought I needed to clean up. But, yeah, I read through it and I did have one question on, you know, group hub, I saw that's included. And I just have seen that a lot of them have gone to the roller sales and I didn't know how that, how that was in state law, if this was, if they were just making exceptions to that in the city's areas, or if, where they could have off sale of the rollers on Sundays.
Rollers on Sundays.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of the communities have been passing that and I didn't, if that was just community by community.
Do you have any group hubs, microbrews or craft brews?
No, no, but there was, I really had a discussion with me regarding that, that we was looking at financing for that, but that's not something we must be careful.
Oh, yes.
So that was, and I did understand the 11, closing from 1 a.m. till 8 a.m. at the times, you know, talks more about when we close, I think.
Right.
Oh, we have to be closing when we can be open, so that means the rest is by open, so.
And that is Sunday now, just FYI.
Yep.
So it's Sunday at 8.
One of the other, I think, minor tweak that we looked at is how long people could be in the bar after that 1 o'clock closing time. I agree to like.
Other than pointing out, signing out.
Something like that. We tweaked that a little bit, just to make sure.
And then I also did have a question regarding, like, our discussion with the bowling alley and I was told that was listed within the fees.
Right.
Rather than, so it's not, you know, as part of it.
Right.
So all the questions I had were answered and I'm comfortable with introduction tonight.
Do they ask any questions? County talking about their social host ordinance again, or is that, is there going to be a push more there? I mean, this, when it was initially proposed to us, it kind of looked like the county was going to move forward with it and you're going to try to be consistent with the county and so on.
Is this similar language that we looked at?
This is pretty much identical to the county's language. And of course, whether you pass it or not, it's always good to be in sync with the county. But if you determine it's, it's an issue here in the city, certainly you could go forward and pass this. I think this is something that, if necessary, is probably more necessary at the county because obviously it's usually easier to know what's going on in your basement of your house, or your small lot in your backyard, than your back 40 acres or the barn that's out in the pasture. But I don't know where the county sits at that right now. The one thing I brought up with the chief that we had talked about briefly that I thought was kind of an oddity, if you will, was that with the social host ordinance, if you have two houses and in one basement there are two 18-year-olds down there drinking a couple of beers, and it's found the host knows about it, they get a social host ticket. The next house over, the two kids are in the basement, the 18-year-old's main line is heroin, social host knows about it, social host doesn't get a ticket. So that was kind of an oddity that I talked with our chief about and said, why can't we include drug use into this? But when we started talking about it in more detail, it just became because of the way the narcotics are defined, that it would be almost an impossibility to try and wind that in here with any type of ease. So we did at least discuss that and kick that around, but it's just not going to work. And you have a lot of those differences with alcohol and drug use. You can have, you know, minor consumption just by alcohol being in their system, but you can't with drug use. You have to find the drug on their person. So you do have those differences in other areas, but I thought when I was reading it that that was really odd that you could have something so egregious and not get a ticket. You know, felony drug versus alcohol, both are egregious of course, but it seemed odd that one would get a ticket and the other one. It seemed both should get a ticket. But after looking over that, that's just not going to work here. So this at least gives you a new target on the minors with the alcohol use and the drug use, the drug use, they'll have to tackle it a different way, like they do with a lot of other laws. So that was kicked around, I don't know if that question would come up.
Well, and personally, I think that I'm a strong supporter of the social host ordinance and I would like to see us set the example and hopefully the county will follow us instead of us following them. And it's supported by public health, it's supported by the sheriff, it's supported by the police department, it's supported, I believe, by survey of the residents, which I could have had here for you tonight, but I was a lax on my duties. I have some representatives are here from Stand Up For You and for you. So I am a strong supporter of it and I think it'll be easier to enforce in the, within the city than it is because we don't have the acres and acres of fields. And I know that there's people that say that we have too many laws and too many things telling us what to do, but to me, if any way we can save one life by doing this, I think it's going to pay a hundred times the dividends. So that's just my view. Let me have any questions.
I'd just say something. Sheila Phong from Stand Up For You, and I can't speak for the county commissioners, but, you know, three of the commissioners are very open to having it come back to the table. And that's what they've communicated to the community members that are still very supportive of it. So I think that whole process that, of getting the word out about that was just a learning process for most of the community members, learning what it is. And so it's just a matter of the commissioners being comfortable with the, all of the residents really understanding the ordinance. They didn't really find anything wrong with the ordinance, but just wanted to feel that there was more political support, I think is probably not the way to put it. But from Stand Up For You's perspective, we've just had, you know, overpouring of support even ever since we introduced it both here and at the county level. So, and the students, so many students support it. And our recent student survey also showed that for students who are drinking, they, that's where they're accessing it, is at social sources like a party. And not, not parties hosted by parents, but, you know, by younger adults. And, and so if we can reduce the access and availability to our teens, it just is better for them.
Am I, am I correct for that scenario, though? You said it's not the parents, but for the ordinance to have any teeth or ramifications the parents have to know about?
Right, right, yep.
I, I'm not against it, it just seems weak, the ordinance seems, but, and the handout you had a few months ago, it's, it sounds like unless they're sitting right there, the parents can, I have no idea what was going on in my basement and they can't be charged, right?
Right, right.
Very no, it's like any other.
I mean, no, that, that, that's not true. If the parents say, nope, I had no idea this was going on, the officer or the deputy is going to make an independent assessment of whether or not they think that person is truthful. So I think at times it was oversimplified that, well, all they have to say is they didn't know about it, don't worry, you won't get charged. No. That officer is going to go in, that deputy is going to go in, and if the parents are sitting there around a poker table and the kids are drinking, that they're going to get a ticket. I mean, that, and so, you know, that's one of the essential things. And it's the hosting, it's not parents. So if there is a party at a house and the parents are gone, but older brother has a party and he's hosting and he knows there are underage drinkers there, older brother's going to get the ticket. So this doesn't apply just to parents, this applies to anybody hosting a party who knows that there are underage drinkers there. They, they are eligible to get a ticket if it's determined or fought that they know about it. And then of course, if they challenge it and want to say, no, we didn't know about it, then they, they take it to a trial and ultimately it's, they're found guilty or not guilty, one or the other. So that's how this will work, just so that you're, you're aware of what exactly, you know, how exactly that's going to be assessed and how it will work.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does the council intend to hold a public hearing, such as the Morrison County Commissioners did about this important issue?
Not at this time, or not, no.
What's the reason for that?
I don't think you're required under your city code to hold a public hearing every time you adopt an ordinance. I mean, you certainly are, but if you start that, you're going to do it every time. Like, I can, I have been contacted by anybody who related, so I think there's a problem with it.
Sounded like the county people were against it and nobody's raised an issue to me.
There was, I was at one public hearings and the people that were there, I think one person spoke against it and there was overwhelming support in the room. And so their rationalization, because they got a lot of phone calls, so if you're going to waive phone calls, it's the same as giving away the public hearing. I don't know what county's opinion is.
I suppose another three pages, I mean, we're going to have another three pages to the city code, if you see a bit more bite to it. I think maybe there's somebody more familiar with this. It seems to me, and I'm just going from recollection, right, that this is like the second push throughout the state on this, I think five, six years ago, it was a hot topic. Does that mean, so I don't know how long you've been doing this, I guess.
I'd say for the last eight years.
Okay.
And it's been, it's been more steady.
Okay. Well, that kind of falls in. It seems to me that when it came out, there was a push to try to not have the plausible deniability angle on it. I don't know if that just proved to be too problematic.
I'm not sure. I guess we can check in.
Do you have the number of cities and counties? Again, I can't remember who else, I hate to put you on the spot.
A hundred and nine cities and then, well, 26 counties now, because Todd County just passed theirs.
Brainerd's had one of yours. Is there any stats on how often they use it?
You know, I don't know from Brainerd's standpoint. I, I know, however, that we did have a big, we're all swallowed opposition, or no, we haven't had, I wasn't getting phone calls when I was there about problems with the ordinance. You know, but people are getting charged and they shouldn't have been in any of that. I don't want any of that.
College towns, for, you know, like St. Luke State, they are used. I have a friend down there who owns about 40 apartment buildings and they, the officers down there use it regularly. Of course, they're into those parties all the time where you have college kids that are 18, 19, and they use it a lot. I go down in those areas and probably other towns that have colleges, 40-year colleges, so.
So what's the penalty? Just a ticket?
Yeah, it's a misdemeanor. Well, it's a misdemeanor, so 90, up to 90 days in jail and or a $1,000 fine. Somebody's not going to get that for a first-time offense, of course, you're probably going to pay a fine. But it's a crime, it's a misdemeanor. And, you know, for a 19-year-old who is dealing with a social host ordinance, employers now don't just ask, have you been convicted of a crime? They ask, have you been charged with a crime? Have you ever been arrested? Have you, I mean, so that's something that's, that's on your record that is going to follow you, particularly in the computer age, which, you know, it can have some sting to it, even if you're just paying a fine. It can have a sting to it down the road a couple of years when you're applying for a job and have to say, yes, I've received a criminal ticket, even if, you know, even if they only paid a fine for it, they pled guilty to it, they paid a ticket. It can have a little bit of bite down the road, depending upon what job you're applying for, obviously, but.
Thing is, it did run, it did wrong. You know, somebody 18 or 17, 16, if they're left, you know, throw home, gotten taxed and not killed, you know.
You have 500,000, $1,000.
Well, that's in the ordinance, so we still wish to introduce it? Have presented it's in there?
Yeah, I mean, you can, this one, we will, you know, recommend you continue on your agenda, I mean, you can vote it out with Allen, whichever way you'd like to vote. The other thing that I would suggest, if you're comfortable, is an ordinance like 78A, which would be a summary. You've seen the summary ordinances, I mean, they're a real simple version of, this is what we want to do with this. I don't have the summary prepared, I would suggest you introduce such an ordinance tonight, we'll have that on your next agenda. So if you adopt the Chapter 3, and you can also adopt the summary at the same time, so we're running those in sync as we have.
78, 78A?
Yep.
On the golf course admin, city administrator?
We've got two things. One, to amend the job description, you may notice that the second line of the purpose for the working relationships changed. We changed that from evaluating to refining all aspects of the Little Falls Country Club to all aspects of golf course operations in a manner, rather consistently and so on. So we did take the Little Falls Country Club out of that, so if the name of the course changes later this year, next year, whenever, we don't have to change the job description at the same time. And then I also highlighted reports, too. We had some discussion on that, which is Item C2, which is your organizational chart, and whether or not you want the golf course manager to report directly to the city administrator or continue to report to the public board strategy. You see the page 20 of your packet, that is the current organizational chart. If you're interested in adjusting that report for the golf course superintendent and groundskeeper, then you would just, make motion to adjust the organizational chart to whichever way you'd like to see that more. The city engineer and I have talked about it, you know, it's really a secure decision as far as who you'd like.
Well, and I'm the one who brought it up and I don't have a strong opinion one way or another, so I'm just trying to, is there something that would be more efficient going direct, reporting directly to the city administrator? Or if we do that, is there something that Greg does that he won't be able to do? And if there's value in having it go up through Greg, well, then I'm okay with that, too. I don't know, I would think it's more was going to get resolved through Greg than it would be through an administrator, it's going to come back down in Greg's hands anyhow, I would feel. You know, if there's going to go to the, come and go to the city administrator, if you have an issue, who's going to take care of it? It's going to be, to me, it's like one of your parks, it's important, same, same way back down.
And it depends which, what the, what the issue is. I mean, if it's a financial issue and the report is made to me as a financial issue, I'm going to be talking to the finance officer. If it's a maintenance issue or whatever, I'm going to be talking to the city engineer. And if the report still goes to, through the city engineer and it's a financial issue and that person's going to be talking to the finance officer anyway, so.
Did, did, did we ask Randy if he thought it made a difference one way or another?
Um, you know, I have some discussions with Randy, but I don't recall that I had that specific discussion. My guess is if I'd asked me.
He says he doesn't have. That's my guess. When this topic first was brought up, I thought, you know, that's a good idea, since we're, at a time where we're focusing on the golf course. But since that time, I've been thinking about that. And with various organizations that I have worked with and been a part of, I've seen it kind of work both ways. And it seems to me that if we have the golf course person report to the city administrator before long, we're going to have the entire right half of that organizational chart camped out in Dan's office.
You know, I did look at, to Lauren's point, I did look at some of the other communities that I had gotten some information on, and it is interesting, one of the golf course in a pretty small town was reporting directly to the city administrator, but two of them in bigger towns, I think Good Brant was one, and maybe one other suburb, possibly Brooklyn Park, maybe Roseville, they reported to the assistant parks and recreation. So I mean, it was really quite a, seemed to me a low-level report that, you know, you're reporting to assistant parks, correct? Now, you've got the park director and then you've got the city administrator, so it actually was down the chain, further than I thought it would have been, but just as an FYI for it, so. From my standpoint, it's worked the way it is currently set up, but you're welcome to change it or, or think about it. You know, you're, you're in the process of hiring a new administrator and certainly as time goes on, if you're talking about a name change, you're going to be talking about some adjustments here to the, to the golf course operations, I mean, one of the something that, you just continue to keep on, keep in your mind that maybe some new revelation will come up that makes more sense and we'll talk about it.
Well, I think part of it might be that right now it's kind of a focal point for the community and there's a lot of discussions going on about it, so right now it might seem to fit the city administrator more than typically your day-to-day operations is at the path that you want to take if, if it wasn't such a focal point tonight in the community. And so I think whatever we do, because I'm with you, I'm, either way on it, whatever we do.
We thought we could gain efficiency, which if it's not going to benefit anyone.
I don't know, I prefer to leave it, it shows you for now with the end, but in turn, you know, the.
you know, to come and report to Dan when he's here half the time, you know, what do you do the other, you know, then it's going to be done to throw them both anyhow. I leave it flying, if the new administrator feels it's going to be beneficial for him, and, you know, within a year or two, I'm not sure Randy will be looking at retirement, too, the whole no different plan or whatever out there.
I did go through the job description with Randy, and, I mean, he's fine with the announcement that we need that, so I recommend that, you know, before the job description, if you're comfortable, at least.
I got an hour here, Stan, with the.
I got just one question here, on page two here, it says, on the very top, it says, provides regular reporting of these quarterly to the city council, considering operations of the golf facilities. I understand that of these quarterly, but then it says, meets regularly with the immediate supervisor and council liaison to the golf course meets regularly with the chairperson. What does regularly mean? Does that once a week, three months, once every four months, once a year? It seems to me that with the advisory board, they were supposed to meet regularly, and they never did. So it seems to me that if we're going to put this in here, we might want to put in a specific, instead of just leaving it open to regularly, because is that once a week, once a month, every two months, once a quarter, twice a year? What's that?
Yeah, I understand that, and I think we had a point on it, I put regularly in there just because I didn't want, they weren't being, and they put it, they meet every month, and they don't, they miss a month, then, okay, now we've got problems, so. My suggestion in regular, my idea regularly is that when you meet in the summer months, you're going to be meeting every week or two, every three weeks, every four weeks, for sure. I think we did put in here that we want a quarterly report back to the city council, but I think it's going to be more in the, when things are gearing up perhaps in the spring and through the summer, and maybe less, you know, in the winter. But, you know, I would say, I would say they need at least one.
Since I am the liaison, if you want to put something in there time-bound, I'm fine with that, because I don't have no trouble.
Well, it's just, you know, the same thing with, you know, he said they didn't meet monthly, so, you know, regularly what happens, they don't meet regularly, you know?
This time of year, I'm out there regularly.
And the other question that I had, the other question I had, too, is who evaluates the superintendent? I mean, he's an employee of the city, and he's running it, he's got all these jobs and stuff, who does an evaluation to see if he's performing what he is, and if there are situations where things need to be corrected or changes made, or suggestions on how things might operate? Who has that evaluation?
Yeah, the immediate supervisor is listed, should be the, is the person that's doing the evaluation. And I'll tell you, in the time I've been here, I've had several meetings with Randy based on comments that I've heard from the public, so, I mean, that, if you look at an evaluation process, Greg's usually, or Jerry at the time, was usually involved in that, but usually the immediate supervisor's the person that's going to be doing the evaluation of that person.
Has those evaluations been recorded?
They're not public. What do you mean, reported?
Well, you know, just say hypothetically, in the future, you get a, you get a superintendent that's not doing his job, there's a lot of complaints, things aren't working the way they're supposed to, you meet with them, it still goes on the same way, what's the rationale to review for that position if there's no documentation of non-performance?
There should be documentation of performance.
If it's a, if it's a non-performance like that, then we have, you know, documentation or recommendation and stuff like that, but if it happens to be, you know, just checking in to see how things are going, we're not necessarily tracking that, so.
I just wanted to make sure that there was some, some sort of.
Isn't that called a dollar, Tony? Regardless of what position they have, we do check in with them, if there's issues that we haven't addressed, we've got that.
Yeah, you do have, you're basically, you're wall-to-wall union in this operation, he has a union contract, and that, there's progressive discipline included for just cause, and that's, you know, oral written suspension, demotion, termination, so you've got, you've got those that he's covered by the union contract, and as Greg was saying, if we have issues with any of our employees, that's, those are the steps that we are required to take by contract.
Any other questions on the golf course?
I don't know if the meets regularly got resolved, I mean, it could be meets regularly, but in no instance, less than.
Minimum four times quarterly or what?
Yeah, less than quarterly or less than every other month or something, it's a good point, we want to make sure that there are meetings going on.
Well, I'm mostly worried about the extravaganza immensely ladies league, because as far as meeting with the supervisor or the county liaison, I don't have a real set of time with my boss other than when he tells me, that's when I meet with him. So, you know, if, you know, Leif or Greg or Dan has an issue they want to meet with more regularly, I think they set that, but as far as these other groups that haven't been meeting, he hasn't been meeting with, I think that's.
Well, see, that's it, because the comments of the Canadian Cup that were in here, the last meeting, you know, they're like, well, we can talk, we have some communication, and like, if we're not, if we're not going to have any communication here with the meeting, with the leagues who are out there every week playing.
You should, but I don't know that you can compel them to meet with the Canadian Cup Commission, there's no real connection there.
Especially monthly, you're going to make them meet with the ladies league, the men's league.
Like I said, as the liaison, if you want to say, you know, I have to meet with them once a month, fine, I'm okay with that, but I think regularly for the chairperson of the leagues, and, I mean, there is only two leagues.
Regularly is fine, Greg just has to check in with them every now and then, and nobody is, because they don't need to meet January, February, or March.
Wait, November, December, January, February, would meet every week or every month with the ladies league and the men's league?
Well, I'm not saying that's a monthly thing, I just think, I just think, you know, based on the comments from the guys that were here last night, that if they feel that communication is now starting to open up, then we need to continue to let that, let them know that that communication is open up, because I think that's a vital part of making that golf course work, is communication. And if we're, if we're limiting or not enforcing or getting that communication out there, then I don't think we're doing our job.
Well, maybe the right, maybe the right place, maybe we put that on the back of the liaison and have him arrange the, you know, because I agree, Jerry, I think they need to at least meet at the beginning of the season and at the end of the season. So, what do you want us to do this year? What can we change? But meet monthly with the liaison.
Well, that's crazy, yeah.
So, and then put that on the liaison.
I don't, we don't even have to have that on the table, I can check with Tom a little about that to make sure. It used to be they had a meeting anyway down at the clubhouse, after they needed to be here, and then the year, and now this, last year, they had one before it started, so, I mean, I can buy it, and then you can report to us, you know, what happened. I mean, I'm really excited to talk about flushable wipes.
Flushable wipes, litigation?
That's me. The City of Wyoming is actually pursuing the litigation against a number of different flushable wipe manufacturers. The manufacturers are basically saying that these flushable wipes are sewer safe, biodegradable, whatever, and in all reality, they don't break down, think like clinics and water just stays like that, doesn't break down. The City of Little Falls has seen some of these issues as well, more from the larger institutions as far as hospitals, senior centers, that type of stuff, where they use these flushable wipes. We haven't had a lot of problems with it, we've had some where they've actually clogged up our pumps, actually broken some check valves in our sanitary sewer system, and so we would like to join this, it's actually a class action lawsuit that they're pursuing, we'd like to join that just because there's not a whole lot of issues with ours, but we want to at least try to get this problem taken care of and get some traction where they either make them more biodegradable so they don't damage our equipment, or basically stop using the language that they are, flushable and that they are sanitary sewer safe. And I did run it past Tony just to see if there was any negative impacts for the city, and it didn't look like there was anything that we were concerned with in terms of joining this suit as opposed to going forward with it, because we don't have a lot of issues to justify going forward.
But you got any questions or concerns? Can you fill in one where are we at?
Class action lawsuits make lawyers rich and the city will get ten bucks.
True.
And I'm not expecting a whole lot of.
Here's your new valve.
And I'm not even expecting that, to be honest, I'm just expecting them to either change the way that the manufacturer's going to break down a little bit more, or change the language on the products.
Mr. Chairman, Greg, I remember seeing that information coming through, I remember it as good as it used to be, is there a cost on this?
There was not, I don't believe there was a cost involved on this, I can double-check, but I don't believe that there was.
And I know that, was City of Wyoming or someone?
City of Wyoming.
Leading it?
Yes, yeah.
It was on, I saw a story on the news about a large problem.
So, on top of this, are we doing something to educate the bigger institutions then about throwing that stuff away?
We have, we've actually been in contact with some of the markets, where we've seen a problem, we've got about nineteen locations in the local council, we can kind of see where things are coming from, and we'll start seeing.
The engineer knows.
We'll start seeing problems, we kind of know who's going to be using them in that area, so we go and talk to them and try to explain and educate the individual on it, but I think that's one of the reasons why we haven't had enough problems, we haven't been able to educate the.
Okay. Disposal of surplus property, Laurie?
I mean, this one.
Oh, janitor. Back to the janitor, pardon.
Let me hand this over quick. We did interviews last week and this week, we do have candidates that has accepted the position, assuming the council approves that appointment. For the parks and grounds, we do have a janitor, top candidate for the janitor's position that we extended an opportunity, would like to kind of tour the grounds here just to see, the name is official, to make sure that they are comfortable accepting the job offer. So, going, starting with the janitor, we've, we had twenty-nine applications, and Mike and Mike, Mike Lehman and myself interviewed seven candidates, we did check the references and extended the offer up to the individual, assuming that they pass all the physical background tests, not getting, they are looking at touring the facilities to see, make sure that they're comfortable with accepting the position. So, knowing that that's kind of in the air, what I would like tonight is at the council meeting to authorize staff to offer the position to our top candidate, if they elect not to accept the position and go to the second top candidate, and they downline it to a position still, assuming that they pass the physical background check at all the grounds.
That's for the janitor one?
That's for the janitor one.
Can we just say one to your, is that better, or can we just offer him, authorize him to offer it for his officers, they got their.
Their rating, and that's what, that's what we do, we score.
Because you're going to have to come back with the actual name.
Right, we're going to have to reply and confirm it at your next meeting, but just because timing is kind of an issue here with John, quite a while ago, but again, we're nice to be able to get them started as soon as, soon as possible.
That's not, I'm usually going to do it that way, we'll come back, try to get the person, we'll retroactively, we'll present, but you've got to have a game in the net somewhere, others require that, so, I know what you're paying people that the council's authorized. I'm sure Wayne remembers how to do that.
So, jumping then to the park maintenance one worker, I wanted any other questions on the, on the janitor. Park maintenance one worker, we had sixteen applications, and then we interviewed six of those individuals. The top candidate is Daniel Kaczynski, we'll be looking at a starting date of June fifteenth, again, assuming that they pass the physical background check and the drug testing. I'm not anticipating any issues there, considering he recently, one of the point of it is one of the volunteer firefighters, so I'm expecting that to come back soon, but we still have to go through that process. So, tonight we'll be looking at approval of that mayor.
Anybody got any questions? Disposal of surplus property, Laurie?
Okay, so, some of you will probably remember that about two years ago or so, we had declared some surplus property, and it is basically some antiques and, and, I'm assuming antiques, things that have been stored at the Rosenmeyer House and at the old Dewey House. When the house was tore down and when they did some cleaning at the Rosenmeyer House, all those things were gathered together, they're in storage, and we've been trying to figure out how to sell them or how to dispose of them. I think it was about two years ago, we contacted several auctioneers in the area, thinking that maybe they would want to come in and do an auction so that you could offer these things for sale and get the best price. I don't think we have anybody on staff that is knowledgeable in antiques or what may or may not be worth any money over there. When we talked to the auctioneers, none of them really had an interest in doing that, they didn't feel we had enough things to auction off and, you know, end up, it might end up costing us money rather than making any money by selling them. So, a little while ago, I contacted the gentleman that sold the draperies for Lincoln Hill, sent him some pictures of some of the stuff, and he said, you know, you've got some things in there that are going to be worth some money, but really not enough to take our time to go through the stuff and call it down to the cities, but he did give me the name of a gentleman by the name of Dave Miller, who has an auction house in St. Cloud. So, about, a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Miller came up, he went over to the storage area, looked at the items that we had, and he did feel that there were things over there that, you know, he could bring to his auction house and sell on behalf of the city. He also looked at the stuff from the car station, the jiffy sign, the gas pumps, there's the pot machine and ice machine, and so he looked at some of that stuff, he's not exactly sure what of that, that he may or may not have an interest in, but he did send us a proposal. His proposal is that he would do the advertising, it would cost approximately three hundred dollars, and he agreed to advertise in the record, because I know there was a lot of public interest in the items that were at the Dewey House. They would come and pick the items up, he would charge fifty dollars per hour, including his travel time, which would include two people, and he assumes it will take approximately four hours to do that, and then he will combine the items that he takes with other items and, you know, do an auction, he has auctions, I think he said, every Thursday night, and then his commission would be sixteen percent of the sale, sale price, if the items, let's see, items that total over a thousand dollars, yeah, he would charge a sixteen percent commission on that. So, staff is proposing that we go ahead and enter into this agreement with Mr. Miller, have him come and take the items he wants, he'll do the advertising, we'll get them disposed of. If staff has to go through and, you know, try and sell them on our auction, when we have our silent auction, you know, we go through, we tag every item with a number, we display the items, people come and do a bid on it, and then we award it to the high And then we award it to the high bidder. It will take a lot of staff time to go through, pull all that stuff out, tag everything, display it, tally up all the votes. And I think we're just going to do better if we go in this fashion.
Lori, with, I just remember what you, you know, the excitement that generated. Now, the donors of those things, I know I remember people getting really excited and saying that that was just loaned.
Right, everything that we, everything that we are aware of that was on loan or that was even donated by somebody, we contacted those individuals. If it was on loan, it went back to them or their family. If they had donated it, we went to them and said, hey, you know, if we knew that they gave a specific item, do you want it back? And we've returned everything that we are aware of.
Okay, that's important.
Yes, and, you know, some of this stuff, I mean, it's like the old doors and the flooring and, you know, the wood. And I know there's a lot of people out there that can do a lot of stuff with some of those items. You know, but it's just not having an outlet, not knowing, you know, what to do. To me, this just seems like a really big tip if he's willing to do that.
One other question, could we cap the hours of work at the fifty dollars an hour? You said he can take up to four, can we somehow cap that so we don't get a bill for thirty-two hours because we ran into this, this?
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely. And then he can, whatever he can take in that amount of time, you know. And he's not going to take everything. I mean, we know that. But at least if he can come, you know, take what's worth his time and effort, you know, that would certainly help us out a lot.
Well, the thing is, the first thousand dollars, he's going to take four hundred and sixty bucks. So, fifty percent is gone right after the first thousand. Plus sixteen percent after that.
But again, if we have to go through and, you know, try and pick things out, sell them.
And Lori can decide. It's probably more for someone who can find people in.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, he does auctions every Thursday night, I think he said. And if he's really busy, he has two auctions a week. So, you know, he's got a clientele, he's got a base of people that know him, that come to his auctions, you know. He's not going to do this if he's not going to make any money out of it.
Well, that's just it. He's going to take half a dozen or a dozen of the best things created in the crop. And then what if we do with the rest of the stuff?
Well, then we'll have to go through it and either figure out that we're going to garbage it or try and sell it ourselves. But at least if we can get rid of some of the stuff, that will help.
So, this is, does this involve all those old books or is that all done?
You know, the books are still downstairs and I thought about that afterwards. I mean, some of the books have been sold, but there are some, you know, downstairs here. So, we could certainly have a look at those as well and, you know, see if we have an interest in any of those.
I think the benefit of the auction house is that this is the type of material products that he deals with. So, he's going to get a much better price than we would be able to get on our auction. But then there's local people who have a lot of interest in that, like we were saying. So, is there a way we could form a community, maybe run an ad through Little Falls so they can at least have a chance to head on this?
And that's what I said in the beginning, he's going to do an ad in the record because it's, you know, there's so much, because of the, where this stuff is originated from.
I think this is the best way to go.
I agree. I think we're doing our due diligence of the public.
They're not at auction houses, so we can't pretend to do it.
The only thing is, the halls of doors in St. Cloud, now they got the mail, they coupled them on by the door. It'll be wrecking. Now, they're going to reserve the St. Cloud and pick up the door that's the... The other disadvantages are going to an auction house, that difference is huge.
They want, I guess, to find a way. Any other questions? Purchase zebra, Arneeta?
Do you want me to get there?
Wherever you want to stand.
Oh, nice.
It's the easiest.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I wanted to first start off by showing you a picture of what's coming. The Pine Grove Zoo is going to be welcoming two little baby tigers for you up there. This particular one is six weeks old and he's in Ohio. So, I'm going to be traveling as of Sunday to go get him. The friends of Pine Grove Zoo and the whole community raised enough money in March to purchase two of them and the transportation cost to get them here. So, we're very excited about that. The media, KSTP in St. Cloud has been talking with me weekly. We've had Fox North up here already. And St. Cloud Times is going to be doing a full, full front page ad on it. So, a lot of publicity with these little guys. Second, the elk, we have, number ninety-six is one of our cows that is ten years old. She has some health issues. And we're wanting to look at trading her for a year-old heifer. A year-old female, for those who don't know what heifers. Calf from Dr. Zbarth. And he just wants to trade it. Dr. Zbarth is one of our veterinarians that does a lot of work at the zoo. He has for a lot of years. He has something like two or three hundred elk. And he was the one that purchased our bull elk last fall, if you may remember correctly. The second thing we'd like to do is, because we sold our bull elk last year, we'd like to pick up a weanling bull calf this fall. It's the cheapest way to go. And it'd be this year's calf, so we wouldn't get it till fall. But the cost on that calf would be approximately twelve hundred dollars. Because right now elk is pretty high and going pretty well. Third thing I'd like to just chat with you guys about, we're receiving pronghorn babies, little pronghorn fawns at about three days old. We're receiving two of them, two females. We had years ago done some trading with Bear Country out in Rapid City, which is where we get the baby bears. And so, they're bringing us two little females, and again, at no cost to the city or to the friends of the zoo. The baby bears are here from Bear Country and once again are the head of the zoo. They're just right up front and taking care of people as they should. And last, the zebra. We did purchase two zebra babies, as you remember, two years ago. We did have our male passed away this winter, had a congenital lung issue and passed away. The female's doing exceptionally well, a little on the wrong side, but we're all right with that. The cost of the little male would be twenty-five hundred dollars. And then Brian, who was the owner, would be transporting the zebra baby. It's not, can't put him in the back end of the pickup and just drive him here. So, we're asking for the council to accept the twenty-nine hundred dollars for the new zebra baby and the transportation cost and the elk calf this fall. And of course, I didn't know if you wanted to do it all now or if you wanted me to come back again in the fall and we ask for the elk calf, but I thought I'd just do it all at one time. Any questions?
Arneeta, when you get these young animals in the fall, you have to take a little extra care so they survive the winter? Or they all take inside a nice, nice place or?
Yeah, we, actually, last fall, we remodeled the inside of the, we call it deer building. You don't have an answer, deer for years now. We actually remodeled the interior, took out some walls, and we have got heaters in there. And this zebra, from the get-go, just, we didn't realize he was small until we got her. And she was six weeks, six weeks younger and she towered over him. And like in some livestock, it takes a little while for some of them to grow and mature. So, we just weren't aware. He never acted sick. He was kind of sassy, as they can tend to be, and he acted totally normal, ate, did great. But this winter, he seemed, even though he was in the heated building, just didn't seem to deteriorate.
Do they get a lot of area to move around or is it confined?
I mean, it's a pretty good sized room, bigger than a lot of the zebras get at a zoo. And if it's a nice day, they can go in and out. They, as long as, you know, with zebras, as long as they can get out of the wind, they actually do quite well. It's just like everything else, the wind kind of hurts. The baby tigers, of course, will not be able to, they can be outside. So, we will pull them inside into the main building, into the vet area, which is where we had our big female tiger this last winter. And they will do quite well inside. In the next winter, they'll be of an age adult enough to handle our beautiful Minnesota winters.
You say twenty-five hundred or twenty-nine hundred?
It's twenty-five hundred for the zebra and then four hundred dollars for the transportation. So, it's twenty-nine hundred for it. And just so you know, the baby tiger is actually between the two. One will be a white tiger, our little female. And this little guy is the regular orange colored. Between the two and transportation, it's about seven thousand dollars. But the friends of the zoo did raise that along with an amazing community. So, we're happily going to be just donating them to the city.
So, the council is aware, we in our park improvement fund have money set aside for the purchase of the animals. So, when we sell animals, we kind of set that money aside until we need it to purchase additional animals. I believe, I looked on Friday, I think we had right around nine thousand dollars set aside for the purchase of animals. So, that would more than cover the elk and the elk calf and the new zebra.
Anybody got any questions, Arneeta? So, it looks like you're going to add that on your I for tonight, purchase the zebra and the elk?
So, come out, can you see the baby sky?
Do we want to put dollar amounts on there or just?
Yes.
So, twenty-nine and twelve? Anybody else got anything else on their other, Janitor Lori? One thing, Lori, I know I talked to you earlier about the credit card deal. Do we get any, anywhere with as far as the credit card machine payment?
I haven't been, I haven't looked at it. I'm still trying to get all this stuff done before I get into that. That's been, still trying to get stuff taken care of on the old cards to the new lake. So, I haven't done anything with that. I will though, that's one of my projects to do.
I just know I was in here the other day and somebody come to pay their water bill and didn't have nothing they had to leave till you cash from an ATM to come back to pay their water bill. Anybody else have anything else? Now, we'll stand adjourned at seven-thirty.